... is being recorded. Anyone wishing not to be seen on videotape may be excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you all for coming. First order of business tonight, we are filling a vacancy on our board. We are administering the Oath of Office to Mrs. Connie Baker. Connie, if you could come to the podium. Our solicitor, Joe Betley, is going to administer the Oath of Office. And you can take your seat on the dais when you're finished.
I'm gonna just repeat what you said.
And you follow that one. So when we go to these little stats that you're references.
Do I have to do that?
No, I'm just gonna say pursuant to law.
Okay.
I, Constance Baker.
I, Constance Baker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear, I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and to this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Constance Baker.
I, Constance Baker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
That I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law.
I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to the law.
And that I am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense pursuant to law.
I am not disqualified due to conviction or crime or offense according to the law.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Exactly.
Thank you. Thanks.
Connie, you're gonna come and sit up here now. So, welcome again, Connie. We're happy to have you here with us.
Thank you.
And I know we already talked about this, but you know, when we're voting on things tonight, we're voting on work session stuff that was pushed to this week. And anything that was on the public agenda that you've reviewed and you feel comfortable voting on, you can vote on anything that you don't feel like you were there for the discussion. You can abstain. That's up to you. And if you have any questions as we go along, just flag me. And I'll stop and answer them. Okay, next, we have a presentation from our high school. Washington Township High School Principal Jonathan Strout. And Science and Technology Education Supervisor Malika Moore. And Technology Education Teacher Matt Persicetti will highlight innovative work being done in the school's robotics and flexible manufacturing class. So if you want to come up to the microphone, thank you. Matt, I hope I said your last name the right way.
Persicetti.
Persicetti, okay. Sometimes it's the hard K with the C.
Well, as we get into the presentation tonight, Mr. Persicetti's gonna do a bit of a demonstration. But fear not, he is very skilled at what he does, as are our kids when they learn from him. So you get to see some of the great work that's going on in just one of the classes that Mr. Persicetti teaches. There's so many great programs at the high school. I want to thank the board, Mr. Bolendorf, and everyone for giving us a chance to present and share with you some of the great work that's going on in one of our STEM courses. You know, they say a picture's worth a thousand words. I'd like to think that great teachers, like Mr. Persicetti and great programs, can change a thousand lives. You can change that, Dr. Gregor. Thank you. Sorry, I don't have a clicker. So just a couple of pictures I wanted to share. This picture's interesting because if you could zoom in, you would just see the awe and the inspiration in the eyes of our kids. And why is that important? Well, this is actually the last day of school when we're preparing for graduation. And still, when you had half the kids last year still on remote and a population of kids in person, you could see they were still so fully engaged, Mr. Persicetti, teaching up to the very end with our kids. And again, this picture was taken just before graduation. In a few minutes, you'll hear from Mr. Persicetti, who will do a brief presentation and then demonstration of sorts. And he'll provide a window into some of the really cool and innovating stuff that our kids are learning in his class and under his tutelage. I do apologize to everyone. We did have two of our students that were gonna be the stars of the show, but unfortunately, their schedules were such that they had to back out due to a conflict. So I apologize, we weren't able to bring them to showcase the work that they're learning from Mr. Persicetti. If you go to the next picture, I have to give a little joke to where my boss. You may know that Mr. Bolendorf captured what kind of became an iconic picture at graduation. It's on, I think, the district Facebook profile page. When our 2021 graduates threw their caps and that moment came last year toward the end of June. But as great as that photo was, I have to give a lot of credit to Mr. Persicetti because he's often out and about, taking a lot of pictures, using the drones, which are not just for photography and video work. But this is just one he took as we were practicing, probably a few minutes after that last picture, when you saw our kids engaged in the work that he was doing. So are you set up? I don't want to rush. Okay, all right, great. But before we turn it over to Mr. Persicetti, I want to introduce my colleague and friend, Ms. Malika Moore, our Supervisor of Science and Technology, grade six through 12. Ms. Moore will provide an overview of drone technology and how drones are changing a variety of industries.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so part of our program, you know, we're teaching kids about how to use drones and how to program them to do different things. But one of the things that we want the students to understand is that drones are playing a really important part in how we're looking at things and how we're doing things in the future. So here are just a few of the industries where drones are important. Agriculture, so we have drones going into places where people can't go, just to manage livestock and surveys, conservation, so they can monitor endangered species. We're using them to deliver them in places that are hard to get to, remote areas. So disaster mitigation and relief. So there are places that humans can't go, that drones can go and kind of survey what's going on. Logistics, so we're using them to replace trucks in certain areas. Filmmaking and photography, as we've displayed here. We have companies like Facebook and Google that are experimenting with solar-powered drones that can beam technology and internet to remote locations. Law enforcement, real estate, so showing different properties. So instead of having a human man those tours, we can actually have a drone do that. So Mr. Persicetti is teaching our children how to, you know, use drone technology to be resourceful and be useful. So without further ado, I'm gonna let him show you a little bit about what the students are doing and what they're learning and some of the things that a drone can do.
All right, thanks for having me today. I'm teaching, this is the third, fourth year I'm teaching the robotics class here at Washington Township. So when I first started, you know, we just kind of wanted to introduce some new things. I was doing some drone work at my other school. And I brought this over with me. And I was also, when I was at the other school, I did a lot of stuff with VEX Robotics. So I, you know, decided to bring this stuff over with me. So the robotics class pretty much consists of the drone technology, which we're kind of doing right now in the fall. And then we switch over and work heavily in the second semester with the VEX Robots. Switch to that next slide there, Mr. Gregor. The drone stuff, we have three levels of drones. The first level of drones that we start with are the 110 pencil drones, where the students basically have to actually build the drone from scratch. They learn how to solder, solder the circuit boards together, solder all the controls together. They learn how to program the remote. They learn how to do all the trim functions, which basically steers the remote or the drone. And then we do some, you know, flying activities with that. It's pretty quick, you know, a couple of weeks long. I usually have like some obstacle courses for them to kind of set up and do some races with the drones. The next level drone that we're, just started this, just got these in September. This is the teledrone that you see here in the middle. This drone's able to fly where they can actually use the camera now to fly first person. It's all like off of an app on the phone, which is great. So it kind of eliminates the need for remote controls. They can steer everything right from their phone. The camera shoots right through their phone. And we have like a video here, I think, Mr. Gregor, right there, up in the middle of just some of the activities that we did in class. So this student's not even in the room that's flying this. He's like actually in another room. And he's actually able to kind of flip that drone through that obstacle course, which I thought was pretty cool. The other cool thing that I'm gonna actually demo for you tonight is the block coding. Again, it's an app that they can just get download on their phone. And it allows them to fly autonomous. So we'll just do some basic programming with this. It gets the students involved in, you know, measuring out the course, mapping out the course, troubleshooting, adding blocks of code, you know, to kind of help them around some of the courses. And then finally, usually like later in the year, when it's nicer out in the spring, after we're done with the VEX Robotics, we'll go out and fly the Phantom 4. So as you can tell, like I said, this is all really just new. We're really kind of just scratching the surface here. Like I said, I've been doing this now for two school years, but, I mean, really, it's been one. You know, half a year was cut off in the beginning, or at the end, and the other at the beginning. So this is gonna be really, hopefully, my first full year with, you know, with the whole entire course. So the last thing that we're gonna be doing is flying the Phantom 4, which you can see some pictures up there on the screen, where we get a lot of the nice pictures. So here, the students will learn how to fly safely. We'll go over GPS mapping. The students will do some activities as far as like a search and rescue, where they'll have to go out around and kind of pinpoint and take pictures and videos of some of the places around the school, and then put that into some type of presentation for us. The next level, after we're done with that, the drones. Let's go to the next slide there, Mr. Gregor. Is the VEX Robotics. So this is pretty much the basic robot that you can do. It's called a claw bot. It, you know, it lets, again, just familiarizes the students with all the parts of it. There's different sensors and motion detectors that you can attach to this to have do some different things. It has some just basic driving techniques. It doesn't really do a whole lot, but it kind of gets them going in the right direction. As you can see from some of the pictures over there on the left, some of the activities that we've done, just, you know, stacking blocks. The one video that Mr. Gregor, if you want to show that right in the middle there, was actually a game that the students actually designed and built. I mean, they had a great time with it. It was just tic-tac-toe. But, I mean, it just, this went on for like a week. You know, just like, I mean, like just different challenges and brackets and... So I just thought it was pretty, you know, giving them an opportunity actually to create their own challenges and, you know, challenge their fellow classmates. I just thought it was really great. They were very enthusiastic about it. As you can see on the slide all the way over there on the right, you know, you can start to add some things to this. You know, you can get this to lift up like three, four-pound balls, like up to eight feet in the air. So, you know, you start talking about like different mechanisms, mechanical advantage, different lift systems, different drive trains. You know, you can make it as challenging as you want to be. So without further ado, if you could get the next slide there, Mr. Gregor. So this would be an example of one of the programs that, this would be like a very entry-level block coding program that I would give the students. So for instance, I'll just put, you know, four nights out there on the floor. They'll be at a very specific length. So for this particular challenge, the drone would have to, by itself autonomously, lift up, fly up to a particular height, fly over and hover over pad one, move to pad two and land, take off by itself, yaw 180 degrees, fly to another pad, and pretty much land back in its own, you know, starting point. So the challenge really with these drones is it's run off Wi-Fi. And, you know, a little drift, left, right, forward, backwards. So the students have to kind of add in blocks of code to account for some of its flaws. So again, I said it runs off Wi-Fi, so let's all cross our fingers here. Meanwhile, I can also program it to take pictures at a very particular point. It'll actually do flips. So I'm not gonna do any of this autonomous program because I don't want to give anybody a haircut or anything like that. So this is doing this all by itself. Not done. Yeah, this is just an autonomous program, like a very entry-level, basic program that would give this student. And we just, you know, just keep adding ones to this and making it a little bit harder for them. Eventually, really, the game plan for these drones was for the students to actually have to write code, either using Scratch 3 or Python, where we can get a number of drones flying together and actually perform a drone show.
Thank you.
What grade level can take this class?
This is a freshman through senior.
So you can take it as a freshman?
Nope.
Is there a class after this?
Uh, not right now, there is not. No.
Oh, okay. Are you gonna make one?
I was impressed when I said this was entry level. What he just showed was entry level, so.
Well, when you go into the classroom just to see the way that the students are critically thinking and problem-solving, it really is quite impressive. And so kudos to Ms. Moore, her leadership, Mr. Persicetti, and just the innovative work. I also have to thank the board and for giving us the opportunity to be able to engage our kids and give them these 21st century skills, right? The problem-solving that goes with it. And the opportunity to really have fun in designing their own learning in a lot of ways. I should also mention that, you know, we're very committed to this. We found an additional classroom that I know is helping a lot with programming and given the opportunity to have the space that students need, especially when they can't go outside and do some of the cool stuff that goes on outdoors. So we're proud of our kids. Again, I apologize, we weren't able to showcase a couple of them, but would welcome anyone to come over and see it in person. Maybe Mr. Persicetti would let you take the reins of one of those programming devices on your phone and will get you learning how to code and to use the drone technology. So again, thank you, everyone. We appreciate it.
What class is that called?
That was a great presentation. Thank you. I think it would be really great for some of our eighth graders who take the engineering to see that that's offered at our high school. That a course like that is offered at our high school and they don't need to go to the county school or anything to take a class like this.
It's also a great example, and Matt's a big part of this, and so many of other curricular areas, where courses like this are designed and created over time as things change in our society in terms of what the demand is and what our kids may need as it relates to their own career paths. And creating a path towards careers in technology and engineering is a very critical thing that we're trying to provide for our children here in Washington Township. And we're very fortunate. Technology teachers are not easy to come by and to find some that we have in our school with the quality of Mr. Persicetti is really a blessing. So thank you, Matt. Well done.
And what's this class actually called?
Intro to Robotics?
This course is Robotics and Flexible Manufacturing is the name of the course.
I'll email you later. Got it. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm in talks and talks with a couple of different organizations to bring a program like that to the middle school. So hopefully, we'll have that up and running next year.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Thank you. Thank you, guys. I love seeing stuff like that.
It's fantastic.
I would love to go to the high school and see the kids taking that class, too. Okay, moving on to some of our business. We'll now have a, actually, oh, what? Oh, are you doing her report?
I am.
Oh, okay. Mr. McGee, would you like to give the report for community?
Sure. On behalf of our Director of Assessment, Data Technology, Registration, and School and Community Hours, Kathy Carey, I provide the following update on things related to school and community relations. Members of the Washington Township High School Junior and Senior Class Councils will be collecting new toys round the clock during their 23rd Annual Township Toys 24 at the Core Drive. Beginning at 2:30 PM on Thursday, December 2nd, in front of the Washington Township High School Core Entrance, students will be soliciting donations in an effort to help make the holiday season brighter for children in our community. They will continue their drive until 1:30 PM on Friday, December 3rd. Snacks and sleeping bags will sustain the students as they accept unwrapped holiday gifts for the children as well as monetary donations. Even Santa will join in the festivities and will be on hand for pictures with students in the core lobby from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Thursday. Community members will drop off a gift if they deem appropriate or make a monetary donation will be entered into a raffle to win Philadelphia sports memorabilia and other prizes. Please ensure that all donated new gifts and toys are unwrapped. If you have not caught the holiday spirit yet, we invite you to consult our calendar on the district website and take in one of our many upcoming musical events in December. Our students have been working hard and are grateful to be returning to live performances. Also, we would like to extend congratulations to our Bunker Hill Middle School Secretary Debbie DeJohn, who earlier this month was honored as a 2021-22 Gloucester County Educational Support Professional of the Year. Also, we congratulate three former Washington Township High School baseball standouts. Joe Cipollone Jr., class of 1978, Nick Favatella, class of 2010, and Scott Young, class of 1977, who were inducted as 11 members of the South Jersey Baseball Hall of Fame just recently on November 27th. All honorees were also inducted previously into our high school's Athletic Hall of Fame. And finally, during the season of Thanksgiving, we express our appreciation to Investors Bank, who gifted the Washington Township Educational Foundation with a $2,000 check as part of an ongoing community partnership. The money will be used for equipment on our playgrounds that will help enhance the experiences of special needs children with hearing lost and related challenges. Thank you very much.
Can I say something really quick?
Yeah.
I don't know, this is out on Facebook, but Chestnut Ridge is in the B101 Christmas Choir Competition. So they, their voting is until nine tonight. And I went on and tried to, you can vote as many times as you want. But interestingly enough, Herfill is also in. It's a K to eight contest, but the semifinalists are divided into days. So Chestnut Ridge, the voting ends today. Herfill is tomorrow. So if something interesting happens, Herfill and Chestnut Ridge could end up running against each other, which would be a really nice problem to have for a district, I think. But as I, I think a lot of us are aware, we were talking earlier, I'm not sure how many times, but I know that our schools have made it into the semifinals often. So that says an awful lot about our school music program. So that's awesome.
Thank you, Kath. I had that on my list. And thank you to Mrs. Liang at Herfill and Mrs. Kershaw at Chestnut Ridge for bringing the kids to that level in their performance. And the one other thing I wanted to mention, too, was we had Gobble Up Hunger. We had great response. I want to thank Matty Kubik and everyone who was involved in putting that together. There was many people involved in putting that together, and I don't have all the names right now. But it's where people in the town and different vendors donate Thanksgiving turkeys and dinners, and the kids organize them for families, and then people deliver them to the homes. Many of the people here delivered them to people's homes. But there were a ton of kids out helping that day. And, I mean, I think over, I don't know how many families were helped, but, you know, some of us had like house number 105, so it was, I guess, at least 100.
Yeah, there was a lot.
Houses. I wish I had the number, if anyone has the number. So I just want to thank, and it's people who have monetary need, but also maybe a medical need or just, you know, they've been identified in the guidance office as a family that needs a little extra help for the Thanksgiving season. So that, I just want to thank the people that put that together every year. It's a lot of work and it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful thing that we do. Okay. I don't know why Field Trip to Hershey Lodge is under School/Community Relations. That's something we're approving later in the agenda. So that might just be double on the agenda twice for some reason. So we'll move on to items of correspondence. Can I get a motion to approve the letters of discipline under correspondence? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the month of October?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now since our work session was pushed, all that content was pushed to tonight, our voting items later are a little, I'll be saying them, I'll be calling them in a different way. But the other difference is, our committee reports will happen now under Old Business. So I'm gonna call on Ms. Happen first to give a report from the Business Committee.
So the Business Committee met on Tuesday, November 16th. We went over the capital project update, which was given on the 2021-22 capital project. We went over the solar update. The committee was informed that the bid deadline was extended due to a request for more time from several vendors to submit an accurate proposal due to the size of the project. We will be reviewing the proposals in December. A tentative budget calendar was also reviewed based on the state calendar that was recently released. There were no policy reviews. The committee did review the Finance Committee Agenda, including the items on the next agenda. Let's see, the ARP-SR Fund Application, Safe Return to In-Person Instruction Plan Update, PEA Funds, School Security Grant, Q Sac, DPR Resolutions regarding these reports that are due are to be submitted. that are due are to be submitted. RFPs and Purchasing Agenda Items were reviewed. Mr. Bolendorf explained the change in a secretarial position at the middle school level. The committee discussed options to offer more locations in the future for gender-neutral bathrooms. And Mr. Kinnicki explained the laptop insurance and what it covers. Anybody have any questions?
Just one thing, we did talk about the bylaw, the one bylaw we're voting on tonight for public participation in all of the committees, but for some reason didn't make it to the list. And just the gender-neutral bathroom item that we talked about in Business, I do want to give a little bit of information to the public about that, because that's something that we've heard from some parents about their comfort level of having their child, you know, using a bathroom, using a girl's room or a boy's room with other students. And so, we're trying to get ahead of some of these issues that are obviously out there and things that we have to deal with as a school district. And so, currently, we have boys' rooms, girls' rooms, and gender-neutral bathrooms. We came up with, well, some of us came up with a crazy idea of, what we thought was a crazy idea, but if you don't throw it out there, then nothing ever happens with it, of what if we had single-stall bathrooms? So, it just eliminates this problem. And you can go into the bathroom, and it's just you, the toilet, and the sink. And you don't have to worry about who else is in there or what they're doing, and it can cut down on discipline issues, it can give privacy. Anybody who's been to the bathroom at work or in a school would probably rather be in a single-stall bathroom than a public bathroom, even adults. So, we brought this up at Business Committee and said, listen, this is like something that we would like to do at the high school, starting at the high school. And, you know, can we find a way to renovate? Can we get grants to do this? Is there grant money out there? And we threw it to Mr. Bolendorf, just like, hey, this is something that we want you to look into. And he came to the meeting with some suggestions, and we planned to do a walk through the high school, the Business Committee, with Mr. Bolendorf and obviously Mr. Shroud and everybody who would be involved to move forward on how we can look at making some minor renovations that would provide for this. We already have some things in place at the school, bathrooms that are not in use that could be renovated and created to be this type of bathroom. So, I just wanted everyone from the public to know that this is an initiative that we have charged the administration with following up on, and I don't know if you want to say anything, Joe?
I just want to, just for the sake of clarity, you said "single-use stall," and I don't want that to create the wrong image. Not a stall, a single-use facility. You may have been to some bars or restaurants in recent times where there are no men's or women's bathrooms, there's a hallway, and there may be six or eight doors on either side of the hallway, and anybody can use them, but you use them alone, one person at a time. And that's what we're looking at. We do have facilities that are not in use at the high school because they're not monitored. So, we could look at renovating some of those facilities and creating more single-use facilities that we think will go a long way moving forward. So, that's the gist of it.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. And also, thank you for being solutions-oriented, because we really kind of popped that on you, like, two weeks before the meeting, and I appreciate you, Kathleen and I, and I appreciated you coming to that meeting with a solution that was better than what we even were hoping you were going to say. So, stay tuned for that. Okay, next up, Instructional Affairs. Oh, any questions on Business Committee? Anything she reported out on the Business Committee? Anything we're voting on? No? Okay. Mrs. DeMayo.
Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Hanukkah. It's nice and cold, we're ready for winter, I guess. So, I'll keep this short. We have some adjustments to be made to the safe reopening plan due to the ARP and ESR Funds, the submission for that. CUSAC, which is a Department of Ed District Performance Review, it's a huge task for all districts, like, huge. It looks at instruction and governance, personnel and operations, and we've always been high-performing historically in the district. There is legislation in place to waive that review if you've been previously high-performing, but that hasn't happened yet. So, in the meanwhile, we're going through the self-assessment plan, and that was submitted. There's some proposals for improvement for additional student support. We're looking at some social-emotional learning with more responsive classrooms, again, all funded through the ESR Funds, additional math and ELA interventionists at the secondary level. For the younger guys, Fast Forward, which is a computer program, I used it years ago, it's a fantastic and effective program, that looks at pre-reading skills, auditory discrimination, memory, those skills that little kids really need to learn to read, so we're going to target them. Some additional ELA and math at Brenlock Terrace and Birch's, and some curriculum writing for special ed. And Mr. Shroud also visited our meeting to discuss some changes regarding some advisors. The debate team is going to be kind of abolished for now, there's no advisor and no student interest, and they're moving that towards three clubs that do have interests, and the advisors are voluntary at this moment, that will receive a stipend, and it's the English Honor Society, Family Career and Community, and Science National Honor Society. So, I think it's a win-win for everybody there. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Ms. DeMayo. Any questions on her report out? No? Okay, on to Student Activities and Communication. Ms. Pollard has a report.
Thank you, Ms. Conzepple. The committee met on Thursday, November 18th. We started off talking about the bylaw 167. The purpose of that, we want to be able to have our public comments procedures in our Board of Education meetings run a little bit more efficiently, so that was the purpose of that. So, we're revisiting, and I think we're voting on that first reading tonight. Yeah. And then, we also discussed our 2021-22 district calendar to include the Juneteenth federal holiday. The Board also requested the inclusion of all religious holidays on the one-page district calendar. We discussed the 2022-23 district calendar to include the NJEAA Convention and the Juneteenth Holiday, which is usually the first week of November, but during that year is the second week of November. We discussed the NJCUSAC District Performance Review. We also discussed the CUSAC Board Resolution. In addition, we also talked about the Field Trip to Hershey Lodge. There were a couple policy reviews or revisions and one abolishment. Policy 5111 and 5114 need to be advised. It was recommended by Strauss S.M. to reflect the change in the code, so that's why that was done. And then, the other policy, 5114, was included in the previous policy, so that's the reason for that abolishment. Additionally, Mr. Shroud came to talk to us also about the new co-curricular positions, the need, as a need arises, they will delete and add positions as they see fit. And I believe that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard.
Just as a point of clarification for folks watching on YouTube and folks in the audience, it'll also come out on an update that I'm planning to send this week to everybody. As it relates to the November calendar for next year, November 1st is a Tuesday, and we incorrectly assume, because we make our calendars two years in advance, so we assume that the NJEAA Convention would follow Election Day, which we thought was Tuesday, November 1st. It's not. It's Tuesday, November 8th. So, the NJEAA Convention always follows the Election Day. So, the district will be closed for the kids on Thursday and Friday, the 10th and 11th. And we know families in our district and others in New Jersey plan family time or vacation time during that time and may do so well in advance. So, we want to make sure everybody has ample notice of that change in the calendar so that they can respond and act accordingly.
Are you going to put that on the?
That'll be on my update this week. But it's already, once the Board approves that the calendar will change, but not everybody's checking the calendar. So, I want to communicate that out directly to folks so that they know.
And the other thing that Ms. Pollard mentioned about the calendar that came up in the meeting was that we thought that that would be a good place to just indicate national, like, religious holidays that are observed by all families, different, you know, families, because that calendar is where a lot of people plan, in district people plan and families plan, and it would be kind of good for people to look at that and say, like, oh, it's Hanukkah, so, you know, we might have different, might not want to plan this or that during that time, or with other religions, students might not be in school, or they might be fasting, things like that. So, we felt that was like a good place to put holidays as just like an FYI for people because parents do consult that calendar. And that's something we've been trying to get a handle on. Okay, we didn't have anything for negotiations, so those are all the committee reports. If there aren't any questions about the reports, we're going to move on, and I want to ask for a motion to open to the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Scrow? I think I'm pronouncing it wrong.
I'm here tonight to support a friend and employee in the district. This evening, the Board is voting on her termination, and the reason why she is being terminated is because she is exercising medical choice, her own personal medical choice. The district is following Governor Murphy's Executive Order 502, which dictates you either need to be vaccinated or you must test weekly regardless of whether or not you are symptomatic for COVID-19. There are employees who have disagreed with the mandate and do not choose to do so, and they were told they would be put on a week's leave of absence, and then thereafter, subject to discipline, and then thereafter, subject to termination. Barbara is being voted to be terminated tonight. So, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Barbara. The district is going to have a huge loss on their hands with terminating Barb. Not only is she a certified teacher, but she doesn't teach in our district. She's actually a one-on-one staff, a one-on-one BSI staff. She doesn't do her job for the money. She does it because she's passionate about what she does. She genuinely loves her children, and specifically, one child that she takes care of is going to be a huge loss for that child. Barb has worked in the district for several years. She was actively involved in Redlock Home and School Council, Bell's Elementary Home and School Council, where I met her, when my child was at Bell's, and Orchard Valley PTO. She has run basket auctions, counted box tops, organized scholarship applications, volunteered for numerous activities, all to benefit our community and our children. The teachers that Barb has worked with have always been thankful to have her in the classroom, and I can understand that because I'm thankful to have her as my friend. She is an employee that is truly dedicated and doesn't do her job for the money. She does it because she is passionate about what she does, and she genuinely cares for the children in our district. It's disheartening and sad and very disappointing because Barb is not going to be the only employee that's terminated for this reason. There will be more to follow. To say that that's upsetting on so many levels is an understatement. First off, Executive Order 252 was predicated on the fact that New Jersey is in a state of emergency. As we all know, New Jersey has been not in a state of emergency for quite some time now. In fact, we've been in the yellow. Cases have been down for several months. Executive Order 252, which the district insists on following, also is not based on science. It's blatantly discriminatory, and I'll explain why. Because vaccinated individuals do not need to test weekly, only unvaccinated individuals. Science dictates that vaccinated individuals not only can become sick, but they can spread the virus as well. So, why is it that we are being singled out and discriminated against? Why? It's unlawful, it's unethical, and it's using coercive tactics, because you are hanging employees' livelihoods over their head because they choose to exercise their own personal medical choices. And the reason that they do so could be various, but I can tell you this much, there are many that fear, and I'm not going to tell you the reasons why, because that's a violation of HIPAA, but there are many that fear that these choices could be detrimental to them, whether they be a swab up their nose every week or a vaccine that has only been out short of a year that we know very little about. Why are employees getting fired for this? This isn't insubordination, not by definition, not by legal definition. Employers are not healthcare providers. Therefore, they should not be involved in any decision with regards to employees' personal medical choices, nor should they infringe upon their freedom of medical choice. These decisions are solely between patients and their doctors. It's an invasion of privacy in addition to not only disclose this info, but also to be forced, for employees to be forced to discuss their choices and ask why. And yes, they are being asked why.
Your timer went off, Mrs. Scrow, so I'm going to ask Mr. Bolendorf to respond to your questions, and if you want to come back up in a second comment?
Thank you, I will.
Thank you.
I don't really know exactly how to respond, so I'm trying to figure out what the questions were, but just for point of clarity, you said Executive Order 252, it's 253. Okay, just want to make sure for folks watching.
Joe, not to interrupt, but the question was, why are employees, plural, being fired? And then, also, she said they're going to continue to be fired.
Yeah. So, the Executive Order requires that staff in public schools have to either be vaccinated and/or undergo weekly testing. The district has provided free testing to our staff. In effect, this week, free saliva testing will be provided for our staff. We have worked very hard to try to make this as easy as possible for our folks to be able to maintain. We obviously want our employees to stay here and work here and be a part of who we are, but at the end of the day, we are required, under this Executive Order, to implement it, and is now in condition of employment. Whether we agree or disagree on that is really not the point. We have a legal responsibility to enforce that. So, we have been communicative, we have provided opportunity, and we would hope that all of our folks would comply. The truth of the matter is, we have very few people in this situation, very few. The overwhelming majority of our staff is vaccinated, and those that are not and have elected to be tested have done so in overwhelming numbers. We are talking literally about a handful of people who have yet to decide, and those that have had to decide and made their decision have created an environment by which termination becomes the crossroad. It's an unfortunate reality, but the choice is still there for people to abide by the Executive Order or choose not to, but the district then has a responsibility to enforce the Executive Order, and that's the position that we're in.
So, are you saying that employees can do a saliva test?
Starting this week.
An at-home saliva test?
Yes, and we've extended opportunities to extend folks, placing them on leave until this time so that we don't have to come to that crossroad. But in light of that information, if an employee tells us that under any circumstance they're not going to comply, then we really have little choice at that point.
Okay, so if you won't even do an at-home saliva test?
We have allowed for at-home testing, testing kits, they're FDA-approved. All of that is available and provided under the guidance based on the NJDOH. It's all acceptable, and all those opportunities have been there. We've worked very hard to try to provide free testing and whatever opportunity other folks wanted for testing on their own, if that's the choice that they wanted to make. And now, a lot of folks didn't want to do the nose swab, and that's why we got the saliva test coming in. Up to this point, some staff have elected to purchase their own kits because they want to do it at home, and that's been perfectly acceptable as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ava Kalella, I hope I'm saying it right. Ava? Chilala. I keep getting the Cs wrong tonight. Hi, Ava.
Hi. Hello, everyone. My name is Ava, and I'm a sophomore at Washington Township High School. I'm here to tell everyone what truly goes down in Washington Township High School. So, first, I would like to talk about the dress code. A bunch of girls, including me, have gotten dress coded for tank tops that show little too much arms or their stomachs. And I think that is just unfair that regular girls, who just want to express their style, aren't allowed to. A lot of people in my school wear harmful things, like chains, spikes, and dog collars. They also bark, yell, and curse in the hallways, and not one person says anything to them. Can someone please tell me how that isn't distracting, but my shoulders are? About a few weeks ago, I got yelled at by my homeroom teacher, saying to go change my mask, because it wasn't appropriate for school. I then went to my first period and spent that hour learning my Spanish and taking notes. When I got back to fourth period, my homeroom teacher was waiting for me with my math teacher. She looked my schedule up, went to that classroom, just to see if I changed my mask. I didn't know that two teachers can use their authority to pick on their students. Teachers are so worried that if my mask is over my nose, that they don't even teach us anymore. We're teaching ourselves, we have to watch our own videos, take our own notes. How is that teaching? I barely learned geometry by myself, so that's a little hard. Every day on the morning announcements, he says, "No place for hate." But does anyone ever realize that the teachers are the ones hating on us, not the students? School isn't fun anymore like it used to be. This township needs to do better, especially the high school.
Thank you. Thank you, Ava. I know it takes a lot to get up and talk in front of all the adults like that, so I appreciate you coming out and, and addressing us. And we're definitely going to take that under advisement. I know that there've been a lot, there's been a lot of dress coding going on that I've asked about, at the middle level and the high school level. My kids have been dress coded for wearing pajamas and things that are not in the code. And my understanding is that we're just having a lot of discipline issues, and we're trying to remind students of the rules. But I don't know what else to say about some of the other things that, as they're centered around the high school.
Well, I don't know how to comment specifically to those specific things. I think it's important that you said that, and people hear that, and I do think that it should be looked into, for sure. And typically, in high school, we, we have various cabinets where students meet with the principal, they come here, meet with me, and we get them to share the things that they're concerned about or thinking about. I've not heard these concerns brought to me, and I've had a meeting with a, a, a pretty large group of high school students already within the past month. However, it's still important, and I commend you for having the bravery to get up. It's not an easy thing to do for a high school kid, and I think that's really, really impressive. I would suggest that, you know, there'd be follow-up. Mr. Strout's here, I'm sure he's going to want to talk with you to find out a little bit more detail of some of the things that you're encountering. And our aim would always to be to create an environment where all of our kids love being there. We think a hallmark of any great place where people learn is when you have a place where kids love being and teachers love working. So I know stresses are high right now over a lot of things. There's a lot of things that we didn't anticipate coming back to school in a full-time way, and things that we're seeing in school that we didn't expect to see. When you have so many kids that weren't in school, particularly at the high school, for over a year, bringing them back in and getting folks doing what it is that they need to do has been a bigger challenge than we had ever expected. And it's just not our high school or our school district facing that. It's really across the board. I talk with superintendents in our county every week, and we're all facing similar challenges. So I think it's really important that collectively that we work together, we engage our parents and involve them, and how it is that we can address some of these issues so that we can get back to learning and get back to exactly what you say. School, in addition to learning, should be a fun place. It should be something that you get up every morning looking forward to, even though you may be tired, that once you get there, you're happy. That's really important to us, and it's especially important to me. So I appreciate you coming out here, I really do. All right, and we'll follow up, I guarantee it.
Donald Keer.
I had a question about the ESER grants, because now we're, we pay some of the highest property taxes in the nation, but now, in addition to those property taxes, we're experiencing 20% to 30% inflation in terms of our dollars being devalued. So from what I understand, the Federal Reserve prints this money up, hands it to Congress, then Congress hands it to the state, and then the state delivers it to the individual towns and whatnot through the ESER grants. And it was at $8.2 million through three grants previously, approximately?
We'll answer you at the end. Our business administrator will be able to answer a lot of the questions.
And then they've applied for another grant currently. And are these grants part of what requires you to impose medical passports on the staff? Because I've seen in other states, states like Florida, that don't have this type of, you know, response to this, the COVID situation. It seems like their numbers have improved, and they've sort of gone on with their lives. But in our state, it seems like the, the numbers are still, the states are red. But yet, we're imposing these, these sort of passports on staff that aren't inclusive to their medical choice, where if you're a vaccinated staff, you don't have to go and be inconvenienced by weekly testing. But if you choose not to receive a, an experimental medical treatment, you, you are forced to go and be inconvenienced by this. And does this call, incur any more cost on the taxpayer?
Are you done with your question?
Yeah.
All right, very good. I'll start off, and then I'm going to turn things over to our business administrator can answer with a little bit more detail to help you. The ESER funding is not tied to any of those mandates. The ESER funding is, is, you know, grant application that we've applied for to provide programming and other supports as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic, a lot for health and safety, but now more so for the closing of, of achievement gaps and other things that we're putting into place. We're, we're hiring grant-funded people to help support areas that we are now learning that are in need. And that is ongoing and will be ongoing until the end of next school year. So that money's not tied to any of that. The state who provides an executive order that you're referencing obviously funds all school districts in the state of New Jersey. And Washington Township is nearly 40%. So there could be penalties and fines and state funding for districts that do not comply with an executive order in addition to potential criminal charges for people in charge who choose not to apply the executive order. I know our attorney can give you a lot more information as applies to that, but it's serious and very significant, but not tied to ESER funding. So as it relates to ESER funding, I'll turn it over for some of your other questions that our business administrator, Janine Wechter, can answer.
So for the ESER funding, there's been a couple of different pots of money that we get notified by the state that we're eligible for. They give us a dollar amount and the allowable uses, and then a specific period of time. So just to give you an example, there was one round, and it was roughly $387,000. And it was eligible to cover costs regarding COVID relief between September 1st, 2020, and December 31st, 2020. So a lot of those monies were spent on reopening and getting things back up and running, getting kids back in the building. So like I said, each time, we get notified of the money that we can apply for, and we specifically say what we want to spend it on. The earlier rounds of money, I believe at a meeting last month, our administrators gave a presentation, but the earlier rounds were more health and safety-related, PPE, trying to get reopened. And then a lot of the monies that we recently applied for is more academic recovery, social-emotional learning, and things like PPE and health and safety-related items. Did I answer everything? And it does not have any impact on the taxes.
Yeah, I think you, I think, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So really, it's, if you think, it's money that we're using to offset additional costs due to the pandemic that we wouldn't normally have in our budget.
I was just going to say too, like, in February and March, Mr. Keer, when we have our budget meetings and we, and we get the budget prepared for the county superintendent, and we go into a lot of detail at all those meetings about some of the things they're interested in, if you wanted to attend one of those meetings. If they're, they're specific to, like, the, all of those budget details, about state funding versus, you know, local tax levy and things of that nature, grant money. Okay. Patricia Klein.
My name is Patricia Klein, and I'm a resident of Washington Township. The reason I made that statement, I think people don't think I live in Washington Township, and I just come visit, but I have been here since February. I am a resident of Washington Township. And I have the right to be here to ask any questions of the Board of Education. Just wanted to clarify that. Before I ask my question, I also want to make a statement. A couple meetings ago, someone had said something about that lady in the back, and Mr. Ellis responded and said, I believe it was Dr. Alexandra, is that her name? Yes, yes. And so I want to make a statement in reference to, I believe it was Julie, who called me out a couple meetings ago. The lady in the second row, running for Assembly. I'm the lady in the second row. If you want us to respect names, respect mine, Patricia Klein. I was running for Assembly. I thought that was disrespectful and very distasteful for you to do something like that. But I'd like to ask a question in reference to equity. Now, there is a difference between equality and equity. Equality and equal opportunity for all. Equity is basically saying, if someone doesn't go to school, they don't go to a trade school, or they don't go to a college, but they decide to sit home and maybe make $20,000 a year. But someone goes to college, or they go to a trade school, because I'm a supporter of a trade school education. And they do what they have to do, and they become a PhD and a superintendent. And their salary is like $200,000 a year. Major difference, 20,000 and 200,000. So equity says, we take money from the 200,000, and we make it, yes, it does. That's, that's what it means, communism. And we make the playing field equal, and we give the money that the $200,000 was, and we spread it to the one that had the $20,000, so that they can both live comfortably. I have a problem with that, because we're educators. This is the Board of Education. What is the incentive to have our students to continue their education, whether they be in college or in a trade school? If you're going to take my money and give it to other people, what is the value? How does it affect the value of education? Right now, it doesn't say much for a student to push forward and go, if you're going to take money from them, and I've asked my college students this, why would they want someone to take their money and give it to someone else, so we could all live comfortably? That's equity. And another name for equity is communism. Let me repeat that. Another name for equity, did I go down? What happened to my volume? All of a sudden, something, okay, is communism. So the question I have is, what happens to the value of education? Is there going to be a value of education? You're a Board of Education. Will we be incentivizing our students to continue, whether they go to college, or whether they go to a trade school? Or are we incentivizing our students to sit around and do nothing? That's the question I have for the Board of Education. Thank you.
I'll, I'll be happy to jump in on this. Mrs. Klein, I appreciate your eloquence. I, but I just don't, honestly, I can't wrap my head around your perspective. Because I can't think that there's anything that we're doing now that subscribes to that mindset. We're building academies for kids to, to create career paths to professional careers in both medical and engineering, and science and technology. We're doing everything that we can. When we talk about, what, you know, I don't, I don't want to get lost over the verbiage of equity and equality or any of that. It, it boils down to simply this, and I've said it before. We want to make sure that while in school, we avail those opportunities, which should be endless and chosen by the students, to be available to them. We don't want any circumstances beyond anyone's control to get in the way. We want to try to clear those obstacles as best as we can so that those kids have a chance to get those jobs, to go forward. All right, I would not be in favor of, of anything that you just talked about. And I'm, and I doubt that most people on this board would be as well. You know, we believe in, you know, growth through education, whether it be a trade school or a college, in order to be able to be those folks that we need to support our own lives moving forward, and for all of them to make the very best living they can in doing so. So I, I'm not really sure where the mindset comes from, or the thought process that this is. And I know this is something that's out there, but honestly and truthfully, it's completely foreign to me. It truly is, in terms of what my, my perspective is, what my beliefs are, and where I believe the school district is. I truly believe that, it, it comes as a shock to me to hear that. So, you know, my kids have gotten a great education in Washington Township, and they're all doing very, very well. And I can name countless other kids who are off to, you know, being doctors, and lawyers, and engineers, and other professionals throughout. And we provided that opportunity. My, my one daughter is a, is a producer and a director for NBC, and she got that primarily from her exposure to that career path in our high school. And that's what we want to continue to do. You're welcome.
And as a parent of two kids in middle school, I, you know, I cannot speak more highly of what the education my kids are getting. And I don't feel like either one of them feel that they don't have to work hard or get an education or have a career path. One of my sons just got a 504 because of anxiety. He doesn't feel like he's, no one's handing him anything. It's leveling the playing field for him. Doesn't mean he's not trying as hard as everybody else, doesn't mean he's not working as hard. In fact, he's working harder to get to where everybody else is, because he has something that's a roadblock for him. To put away, to sit him down and say, "It is fair," you know what I mean? See, no one wants to feel different, you know? So I mean, I can speak from my own children's experience and as an educator in other districts. I don't get that impression from any district I've worked in or here that there's not an importance for education. So I, I hope that alleviates your, your feeling.
Rita, Rita Watts, Rita Watson?
I didn't say my name, but yes, you could say.
Well, did you, is it, did you give this card?
Mrs. Watson.
Is this your, is this your card?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
My name is Mrs. Watson. Since you told my full name, that's quite funny.
Well, that's, yeah.
I've been living here for 20 years, or better. Because when I was young, my father would go with Italians. I always picked with Italian men. So I said an Italian joke, and people had said that I'm racist because, actually, kids. Kids said it, because I said the Italian joke. And my Italian joke is really, I, my father would leave me on the side, because he was a worker, and I would hear the Italian man joke. It's called Mussolini Argument, okay? And it was really about Germans coming into Italy, a very long time ago. So when I was going out, because I'm equal opportunity data, I dated all kinds of people, all races, all socioeconomic status. Okay, so what you're talking about, to me, I cannot agree with you. Because you can't get an education, is let's say, when I first moved here, a crazy woman said, I was building-
Mrs. Watson, can you speak into the microphone and address the board, please?
Yes, a crazy woman said that I was making a nuclear bomb and called the FBI on me, on my family. Now, I have nine kids. And once you call, and I dated all different types of men at all socioeconomic levels. I love men. My father raised me, that all men were wonderful. You just had to find it. So like I said, I dated Italian men, so I told the Italian joke. But do you know that people actually thought that I am a German white communist? Because they used to call Italians communists. There are a few Italians here who, my father would say that they called them communists, because they, right, because of Mussolini. Because of Mussolini, they called them communists. Now, when you say you're making a nuclear bomb, you're talking about someone saying that you are a terrorist. You can't get true equality when somebody staffed your opportunities for an education. So let's say you're at school, and a kid say, well, if all of these men here have a hood on their head, And a kid say, well, if all of these men here have a hood on their head, how come I can't have a hood on my head? And they don't pick all of them, they pick me. You can't get an education with that, because they're singling you out. Bullying by adults, because most adults bully children. And that is what deters them from getting a quality education. You know what I'm saying? It's like, if you look at me, and you see me, but you think that I'm supposedly different, right? Then you treat me differently. That's what I call the gang and group. But like I said, you can't get equity or equality if you're being singled out and said, you can't do something. Because you're going to believe eventually, you can't do something. It's just like you calling me a racist, right? Or you saying I'm a terrorist, because I have an indifferent thought. Because I'm seeing something from a different perspective. And so, I love what you say, but it doesn't mean. Because hate really is in this community. And until you address racism in this community, and the inequality, and the lack of compassion that you say you have, you're never going to fix anything. It's a lie. You can't, equity and equality go hand in hand. You have to be willing to give a little and take a little. And you can't get any of that. If you really can't say whatever you want to say, you have to pull back and just, I request. And say, no, you're wrong. This is wrong. You can't treat some people one way, and think they're the good people, and another people a different way. You can't do that. And you can fake it all you want. But at the end of the day, the truth always comes to the table. You don't act like that. You put on a pretty face, but you're not really very pretty. You just wanted to look pretty. Some of you, you have PhDs. And yet, there's some people in this community who don't have it, and they have compassion, understanding. You say something, and they understand what you're saying. They see the truth. And I don't think any of you can technically look me in the face, because you technically, the reason my children didn't get an education is because I spoke out, and you took it out on my kids. I say, oh, defiant of authority. That's like me building a nuclear bomb, right?
Mrs. Watson?
And yet, I don't have the materials to build a nuclear bomb.
Mrs. Watson, your time is up, Mrs. Watson.
You always do this.
Cheryl McShane?
Hi, how are you? I was just going to ask the question as, why some, why vaccinated staff members don't need to get testing? And in addition to that, if it is mainly due to just what the executive order is, I wanted to ask why we're not just doing what's right by keeping our entire community and all of our students safe under the same protocol as unvaccinated?
Are those all your questions?
Basically it is.
Okay, thank you. I think Mr. Bentley would respond to that? Or Bolden, either one, one of you guys?
No, try. I mean, the district has to comply with the executive order. I think you probably hit upon that. The executive order requires school employees to be vaccinated. And it also says, if you don't want to be vaccinated, you have to be subject to testing. That's why we are subjecting the unvaccinated to the testing in compliance with the executive order. It's really as simple as that.
And to just expand upon that. The state has expended dollars to either testing facilities or directly, not to schools, but the testing facilities, to provide that testing. And it's limited to the unvaccinated. So we would then be, if we were even able to do so, charged with spending money that we're trying to spend on our kids through the ESAR funding and things like that, to expand testing, which for right now, would be for over 1,500 people on a weekly basis. So we are applying the law as it, or the executive order as it is written. And so we'll continue to test the unvaccinated.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to close to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, Mr. Paul Mendorf, you mentioned about the saliva test.
You mentioned about the saliva test. When that test is utilized by a staff member, is that test going to be administered in the schools? Or are they going to purchase the test and do it through a Zoom provider?
No, it'll be provided in the school. Be using the, what's called the Green Room. It's a separate building behind the high school. That's where the testing is being provided by LSI. It'll be provided there as well, so it'll be on campus.
So it'll be right in school?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But right now, so that people are not, you know, put on leave and stuff, they are allowed to do it at home, if they go?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, like, we're trying to...
They do it at the end of each week, and have to report their findings by Monday morning.
But when they do it at home, though, are they going to be doing it with a Zoom provider?
No, it's not required. It's FDA-approved. They basically upload their results and report them to HR. It's a function of HR.
I know not all districts are doing that, but we're trying to give as much choice as possible to people, so that they don't have to be put on leave, or anything like that. Okay, moving on. So this is where, I'm going to go a little bit slowly, because I know you have to go up and down in the agenda from work session to regular. So first thing, can I get a motion to approve the report of the superintendent, work session items one through four, and regular session items one through four?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
I'm still using that.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes, to work session one through, to regular session one through four. Number one, abstain. And two through four in the work session, yes.
Did you abstain on number one in the regular session?
I abstained for number one in the work session, Hibb Report, unless I'm looking at the wrong thing, because I'm nervous about missing that one.
No, that's right.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the rest was yes?
Yes.
Ms. Halpin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Okay, for instruction, there were no work session items. Can I get a motion to approve regular session items one and two?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Halpin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain.
I'm supposed to go last.
Because I was supposed to go back up to her.
I know, but it's Pavlovian. You say, Ms. Kuzempel. I just think it's over, I didn't listen for Connie. Thank you.
No, I hadn't called her name. I called yours first, I forgot to go back up to her.
I know.
Sorry.
No, don't say sorry. Don't say sorry, Elaine, no. You can never say sorry, please. You keep us all on track. Okay, are we good then? You got all that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Under policy, motion to approve the work session items one through five. The fifth is the bylaw that we added, that we discussed in committee, that we talked about. And there are no regular session items for that. This is, yeah, first reading.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Halpin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, for student activities, I need a motion to approve for the regular session items one through three, but also the field trip to Hershey Park, which was listed under Kath's report.
So moved.
And also, what were they? Oh, there are no work session items, sorry, thank you.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Halpin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Under human resources, approval of work session items one through 44, and regular session items one through 31.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Halpin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Under finance, can I have a motion to approve work session items one through three, and regular session items one through eight, and 10 through 22?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Halpin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. For special ed, nothing under the work session, motion to approve regular session items one and two.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Halpin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. One item under negotiations, down in the work session agenda, MOA for WTEA. Can I get a motion? Okay, thank you. Anyone want to move that forward?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Abstain.
Ms. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Halpin?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Items of new business. Anyone have an item of new business?
Could I jump in before we start? Because I think it should not go unnoticed.
Yes.
Tonight, very unfortunately, but understandably, after 42 and a half years of service to the Washington Township community, the Board approved the retirement of Mr. Jack McGee. Mr. McGee has served as a teacher, an assistant principal, a principal, a director of secondary education, and the assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction over those 42 and a half years. I know Jack leaves very reluctantly. But things happen in your life, and very favorable, but have brought him to this point to make what is, for him, I know, a very difficult decision. Because not only is Mr. McGee a part of Washington Township, but Washington Township schools are a part of Mr. McGee. And he will be sorely missed. He has been an incredible colleague. He was amongst the team of administrators that hired me and brought me into this district 25 years ago. I'll be forever grateful to him for that. Most importantly, he's a wonderful man, and a great friend, a terrific father and husband, and a friend to all who know him. I don't know anybody that is more upbeat, positive, energetic than Mr. Jack McGee. And our district will sorely miss him. They really will. He does so much behind the scenes, and is so positive with people, that in a world that has become increasingly more cynical, the world needs more Jack McGees in it. And I'm glad I'm still going to be able to be a part of his life, and he a part of mine. And you can go visit him in Wildwood, New Jersey, because that's where he'll be. So congratulations, Mr. McGee. Hey, Joe. To let you know how, I've lost 13 pounds in the last two weeks with the stress over this decision. Washington Township is my life, my life. And the idea of leaving this district and leaving this township, although it's a dream come true for my family, brings me to my knees. I thank everyone. I am eternally grateful to everyone. Our students, our parents, my colleagues, everyone here that comes to our board meetings and everything that we do. I am eternally grateful. And I thank you for giving me the love of my life in working for this district. Thank you very much.
Jack, just on behalf of the Board, you make our job so much easier. You, not only are you a wonderful hype man for any meeting that we ever attend, you feel like you, you know, are a celebrity when you attend a meeting. Jack McGee makes you feel that way. And, but also, and nothing's ever a problem. You need something, you ask Jack, it's, you get it immediately. It could be 8 o'clock at night. It's like, I got it. He picks up the phone, listen, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to call this person, I'm going to get it in five minutes. It's like, the sense of urgency in responding to you as a board member is like unsurp- it's great. And we're just going to miss you in so many ways. And we're all going to wear matching pocket squares and socks to the next meeting in homage to your fashion sense. fashion sense. We love you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Is he crying?
Yeah.
All right.
There's no crying in baseball.
Yes, don't do that. We're all going to come down to your house in Wildwood and hop in your lake or whatever, your bay. And you'll be like, we can't get rid of them. Okay.
And Jewel, real quick, the Archer Valley Middle School a couple of weeks ago put on their fall production of yard sale. So just want to thank the staff, the advisors, Ms. Cancilla, the work that goes into any kind of production is immense. And thank the kids, the, and they did a great job, and it was nice to see them up there. So thanks to them.
It's that season for all the performances. Love it, okay. Yes, yes.
Yeah, want to thank the board on behalf of myself and attorneys at KPART for reappointing us as solicitor and as negotiator. Thank you for your trust. I look forward to serving you, the administration, the community, for hopefully next year and years after. Particularly you, Jack. I really enjoyed working for you, although I would never, ever forgive you and your 1975 Glassboro basketball team for beating us, beating us when I played for Hanfield in the South Jersey Finals. So I'll take that to my grave, too. But we really enjoyed it, Jack. Thanks.
The end of an era. Okay, can I get a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? I don't have a card. Okay. Yeah, you can send your cards up if you want to talk. You can just go, Marcy. You're right there.
This, because I was going to email it, but you know what? I'm just going to read it. So I'm going to follow up with Ava with the mask thing that she was just referring to. I put a message out to, of course, it's not coming through now. I put a message out to the parents and students, and I was asking about what was going on in the high school with masks. And of course, my email that I sent to myself is not working now. But I was kind of wondering, like, was staff being told to be mask monitors now? Because the stories I'm getting have been insane. You know, it's constant all day long, them reprimanding kids, fix your mask, fix your mask, while they're walking down the hallways, they're being stopped. Kids are, kids that never got in trouble are now getting detentions, getting lunch detentions, getting two lunch detentions, whatever it may be. I'm even hearing that teachers have video recorded kids that didn't have their masks on properly. And I just think, like, I get the concept that masks are needed, health, you know, all that other stuff, but I think about the mental stuff that's going on with these kids. And I can't even imagine being in school all day and being reprimanded, or hearing people constantly being reprimanded. I just don't know how these kids are going through their day like this. So I don't know, I don't know. I feel like it's bullying to me, like, that they're doing this to these kids, and I just don't get it. And I don't really have a question. I just want to kind of let you know things that I'm hearing from other parents and kids. And I'm just glad that when they walk out of that building, they get to take those masks off and not put them back on again until they walk back into that school the next day. So that's all I wanted to share.
Marcy, I'll respond. I mean, obviously, folks know that I spent a lot of years of my life as the principal at that high school and executive in the 1112 wing. And Mr. Strout's sitting here, and it's like we're talking about the man who's not in the room. And I think that what I would like to say to the things that you're hearing from the people who hear them, that how they should be advised, and if not through you or through anybody, is that they would reach out directly to Mr. Strout or to the administrators at the high school to make them aware of the things that they're hearing their kids say. We're all old enough to know that somewhere in the middle sometimes lies the truth, but handling it and directly handling it with the people who should be responsive to be able to answer the questions, I think is really critically important. And if our folks are watching this, I would expect that and encourage folks that if they have questions or concerns, to contact first the very people that they have the questions or concerns related to. The Port of Education, obviously, isn't going to know exactly what's happening at the high school level. We appreciate you letting us know that. But if we're looking at resolving problems or getting to the problem of it, direct communication is critical. And I know Mr. Strout's very responsive. So I would encourage the folks that you talk to to do so. And I'm certain that Mr. Strout will respond to them, to let them know. I know that there's a lot going on, that they're trying to get a handle on at the high school right now, trying to keep things in place and mask and becoming, nobody wants to be the mask police. That's a hard job, all right? And we would all like to be in a place where we don't have to do it. We don't know what's going to happen on January 11th, when the executive order sunsets. We'll see. But as it stands right now, that's not a good place that anybody really wants to be in. But yet, the children are required to have them. So supporting that message at home is also really helpful from our parents as well. So I appreciate you taking that message back to the folks that you talk to. I think that would be very helpful, because I do think that collectively, we have to work on these things together. So thank you.
I think it's Mrs. Watson again.
And Jewel, I can see that there is a change in the community about the racism in this community and the educational inequality in this community towards some children. I'm going to keep speaking. I've been here for 20 years. I've been here with most, many of the people here wasn't even here. I, even as a child, my father would bring me here. And I'm telling you, there is hate in this, and it's taught by parents, because kids really don't know racism. They are taught racism. And I explain why it is, I call it basically, some people are more prone to be racist than other people. And there's a reason for that. And so the treatment of some people over other people doesn't even have social, economical status, or inequality, or equity. It is because some people choose to say, you're not like us. And that's why you do not treat them fairly. Because racism is about treating other people unfair and being hateful to other people. And then when somebody speaks out, and they don't talk the way you want them to talk, you treat them indifferently. And I will continue to get at the teachers in the suburbs to change how they are teaching young people about racism, and that they're not allowing other people, true cultures, to integrate into the community. Because education is a value to everyone. And so when you leave someone out, you are doing harm to yourself. That's what she's talking about, equity. But equity, she doesn't have it correct. Because really, what you want to do is have equality, so that everyone in this room can be educated the same. And if they choose to be a monk and live on the street, they can. But if they want to be a doctor, they can. But what you do is you handicap some people. Special ed handicap of some people are saying that they are behavioral problem instead of you can't reach them the way that they should be reached. And there's a reason. Sometimes someone don't want to reach. They don't want to have discernment. They don't want to listen to you. They don't want to understand you, because they don't want to. And the reason why they don't want to is because they don't want to see you living in a, in Washington Township, the average house is probably $300,000. And so if you make sure that someone else doesn't get the education, because technically, you have to make at least $80,000 to live in Washington Township. And if they are doing a shop, and they only make $20,000, they're not going to live in Washington Township unless they have low-priced housing, which is a rarity, and then they separate them all the way to a side section. And I know how difficult it was for us to get into this community. I brought my children into this community so that you would teach my children, and all of them would have a fair shot at a quality education. And when I came here, I had to fight you all the time to just get that. Now, the reason why that woman said that I was making a nuclear bomb is because I told my sons 20 years ago that you had to take nuclear science, chemistry, biology. And my children couldn't, while they were here, they wouldn't even give it to them. I had to fight all the time to get true quality education that I got, that I received by my teachers. I call my teachers, you call them hippies. I call them morals, high moral, high standing. Because if you're going to make sure that I'm well-educated, you're saying, hey, if you fight me, it'll be a fair fight. But when you deny the education of some people, it's not a fair fight. It, there's no equity. There's no equality. And in this community, you also bully people out. And then you have people who I say live here, but they go and do their dirty in the inner-city area, because I work everywhere. I'm everywhere. I see everything. I can tell you who's doing what where. And so that's the horrible, horrible thing that you do in this community, and to some of the children in this community. So when you say, no hate in this place, that's a lie. You're putting on a beautiful smiley face, but you're not digging deep. Am I really a racist? And what is real racism? You have to dig deeper to fix what our grandfathers did, so that we can make a better world. Because I don't want to have a, first of all, I don't want to have another black lives matter.
Mrs. Watson, your timer went off, Mrs. Watson. Thank you for your comments.
Patricia Klein?
I just wanted to say, I really feel bad for the teachers that are being dismissed because they're taking a stand for their rights. And I pray that they will find a better job. And I salute them that they're standing for their principle and what they believe. But I had a quick question. There was a letter, you did write a letter to Governor Murphy, and you asked him for the science. I've been asking this the last time I stood up, and I just want to know, have you received the science from Governor Murphy?
No, the governor has not responded to our letter. Can I get a motion to close to the public?
Wait a minute, do I still have some time? If you haven't received a response, what is the next, what is your next process? What are you doing now that you have not received a response from Governor Murphy? What's next? Because every time I get up, I give you the science that says the mask is killing our children. So where is the science that says the mask is protecting our children? If we don't have that science, why are we following the science that Governor Murphy is talking about? Because it is killing our children. I keep saying about the carbon dioxide, 12, 12, I think it's 12 times, or six times what it's supposed to be, 2,000 parts per million, and it's at 13,000 parts per million. For three minutes, they're breathing in carbon dioxide, which is poison. So if you haven't gotten the science from Governor Murphy, why are you still following the mandate? The mandate is not a law. I think everybody thinks it's a law. It's not a law. And if you really, and I truly believe that you want to protect our children. I really do. I think you're really tied right now because the funding of the state that you get from the state to keep us going here. And I think you do an excellent job here in the school system as far as educating the children. But now we are damaging our children with the breathing in of carbon dioxide. If you haven't had, if you don't have it, if you don't have the science, why are we still masking our children? Thank you.
Just so you know, in July of 2021, that was retracted due to insufficient evidence. So you've used that article a few times to talk about the carbon dioxide, and it was retracted. So, not today, but you have, and I pulled it up before, so I had it in case it came up, because it was retracted a month or so after it was published.
And the governor has not responded to our letter. Our attorney has, we have asked him to give us an advisory opinion on whether or not the mandate, it does function as a law. For us, it does function as a law. So that's what we are doing, is following the law. Can I get a motion to close to the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.